Okay, we're going to call to order the Franklin Regional School Directors Committee, the whole meeting for May 2nd, 2022. We're in executive session from 6:45 to 7:25 for personnel, security, and legal issues. Okay, Dr. Pyners is under the weather tonight. He's not going to be doing the meeting, but he is listening in. And superintendent's report is Mr. Suwak with the military, I believe.
On behalf of all of us at the high school, I'd like to thank the board for, once again, taking the opportunity to recognize those young men and women of the class of 2022 who have committed to service in the United States Military in defense of our fantastic country. So I know how busy your agenda is tonight. We'll be briefed this year. We have four students who have committed to service. Unfortunately, three had other obligations this evening, but I have with me Nick, and you'll get to learn about Nick in just a second, but I want to make sure that the other three young adults get recognized. Muhad Akhtar, who has committed to service in the United States Navy. Maya Simmons, who's committed to the United States Air Force. Allison Townsend, who is committed to the Air Force through the ROTC program. And last, but certainly not least, our guest of honor, Nick Afanasev, who is committed to the Army National Guard. So I told Nick to say a few words that led him to service, answer any questions the members of the board might have. So if we could start by giving Nick a round of applause. Appreciate that.
I just want to thank Mr. Suwak for having me here and you guys. I guess I can say the reasons I joined the National Guard. So I'm actually an immigrant from a different country. So when I immigrated here, I got a lot of opportunities that I would not have in my native country, and I thought that one of the best ways to give back to my nation, the United States of America, was to join the National Guard and serve for a bit and just give back, I guess.
What's your home country?
Russia. Yeah. Like I said, I definitely would not have the opportunities that I have here there, so...
I hope not.
Yeah.
Well, Nick, thank you for that decision. There is no greater honor than to serve one's country, and so I applaud you for that.
Absolutely. Thank you.
I do want to say, my daughter is a junior now in college, and she will be going to law school here with our government.
Okay.
So you have a lot of opportunities ahead of you.
Absolutely, of course.
And Spasiba.
Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Suwak, Nick, I want to just, on behalf of the entire board, thank all of the students that took the courage to stand up for this great country and to serve. There's no greater honor than to stand up for this great country that we all live in. Never, ever take that for granted. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Suwak, thank you. Okay. Anything else under superintendent's report, Dr. Pyners?
No, that is it.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we're going to public comments. Okay, public comments for committee, the whole meeting. Matthew Ackerman? Put him on for minutes.
My name is Matthew Ackerman. I live at 4211 Bulltown Road. Just a couple of comments about the curriculum. I know some time ago, there was a big debate about the book Persepolis, and I didn't want to say anything until I actually looked at the book myself. And just, I know that time has come and gone, but stating from this day forward, when I went through the book, I just don't think that that book is appropriate for honors ninth grade, mostly because it, in general, resembles Dogman in terms of the amount of literature in it. Now, Dogman's a great book for younger kids, but we're talking about honors English. And then included with that are some imagery that I don't think that the school should endorse. People talked about, you know, kids see a lot of things on the internet, and they talk about a lot of things to themselves. But again, that's to themselves. The school is representing as an authority figure, and I just don't think that imagery like that is appropriate. There's plenty of other literature that could be much better suited for ninth grade honors English that could talk about the history of other countries, and it could be actually more literature and less pages that would challenge the students' minds and their thought processes and allow their own imagery to paint a picture of what's going on. So there was just that input there. And then another thing was, I took a look at my son's seventh grade science. Just part of the homework he was going on, and they were just discussing different energies, you know, nuclear, coal, renewable, and the slant was, it was very pro-renewable, and that's all right, but I didn't really get the sense that it was very fair in discussing all of the challenges and the issues going on with renewable. Now, that's just a small microcosm of what we're talking about here, but as parents, you know, we are concerned, especially across the debate, you know, across the nation with schooling, across the country, you know, what is being taught to our kids? And then, so I understand that there's like policy 108 and 109 where the list of books are supposed to be available for the parents to be able to look at and review themselves, and I wasn't able to find it on the website. Now, that could just mean that I couldn't find it, but is that, is the list of curriculum available? And if it is, perhaps we could reshape the website so it's a little bit easier, because I was even going through the search feature and not able to find the list. So, you know, I do think that it is a good thing that parents are getting more involved, trying to figure out what is being taught, because it's not Franklin Regional that I worry about in terms of what we're teaching kids. You know, I believe we have a very excellent community. It's the state and federal governments that I do not trust at all, and they've shown and proven to be untrustworthy, and that can affect how our schools are run here. So that's all I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Matthew. Schmidt? Shell? Hi.
I'm a little bit shorter than the last speaker. Hi, I'm Michelle Schmidt. I just wanted to come and introduce myself.
I need your address, Michelle.
I'm sorry. It is 510 Hoover Drive. I'm actually a Washington Township president. I was coming to introduce myself, though, as running for the State House Representatives position in the 55th District. So I know if you are aware of the redistricting, this is now the 55th District. I am a Kiskey Area School Board member. I've been on that board for seven years. I hold a position on the WIU Board as well, so I've seen some of you over my years on the WIU. I just wanted to let you know that there are three candidates on the Republican ticket, but I know education, and education needs changed up in Harrisburg. Nothing's going to change until we start up there and kind of trickle down to our district.
Mr. President, may I interrupt you for one second? Did you say you do live in the district or don't live in the district?
I am in Washington Township, but in the 55th District, which is why...
So you're not in the Franklin Regional?
You can't speak, then.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Sackar?
Pretty close.
Pretty close, okay.
Hello, my name is Chris Satcher. I live at 3445 Woodland Drive, and just wanted to address some concerns that I had with the school district as regards to safety for the students. I'm not sure if any guys saw on the news last fall, but there was a report of sexual assaults that took place in the Franklin County School District. These sexual assaults involved a biological male who, on two separate occasions, sexually assaulted two separate biological females while they were in the school's female restrooms. After hearing about this, I spoke with our local school principal, who assured me that biological males were not allowed in the female restroom, but I haven't seen anything in writing that actually says one way or the other, and I was just curious if that was something that could be addressed. Additionally, it's come to my attention recently that several students have brought it to the school's attention that a biological male has been talking about rape and other inappropriate topics while at school. This same biological male has been going into the female restrooms, and I've reached out to the school principal, VMO, many times recently to inquire about this and ask her the following questions. These questions are, are female restrooms and/or locker rooms only for biological females? If so, how are these guidelines enforced? If not, what are the guidelines that would allow biological males to enter these facilities? Also, what safeguards are in place to protect biological female students from an opposite biological gender that was using that facility? What are the consequences if a biological male goes into a female restroom and/or locker room? What should biological female students do if they witness a biological male using a female restroom or facility? How would biological female students be protected from possible lewdness and harassments? Because I noticed in the school handbook, harassment and lewdness is something that's in the tiers for being addressed if there's an issue. If Franklin Regional does not have any guidelines or policies to address this, when will they, and what can be done in the meantime to protect students' safety, especially since there's already an issue currently in place? My questions, I think, are very straightforward. I understand this could be a topic for some people, but I think it's very straightforward to protect students' safety, their dignity, their privacy, and I think there should already be an established policy or guideline to address them. If there aren't a school policies for some or all these questions, then I think it should be, in the school's best interest, to create a policy to protect the student's safety and privacy, as well as any possible future litigation that could come to the school district, especially now that you've been officially made aware of this. I'm sure that these litigations could be very costly for the school district, and as a taxpayer, you know, I don't want to see my taxes go up. I don't want to see, you know, anybody put in a situation that's bad for a student, but I just think some safeguards and some policies should be in place just to protect everyone involved, including the Franklin Regional School District. If this could be addressed promptly, I'd really appreciate it, and thank you so much for your time and service. I appreciate that you guys volunteered and give up your busy time to do this. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Okay, Sue Engelfritz. Suzanne Engelfritz, I'm sorry.
Hello, good evening. Susan Elgin Fritz, 3440 Mayor Drive, Murraysville. On April 4th, I shared with you concerns, concerns about student surveys that my daughters receive asking preference for pronouns, gender-neutral bathrooms, that FR is using an athletic form that now recognizes non-binary as sex, which, by the way, sex and gender are not the same. Sex refers to as a person's physical characteristics at birth. Gender encompasses a person's identity. And fourth curriculum, specifically concerned why graphic novels are permitted in the high school level. This evening, I am here not only to reiterate these concerns, but to talk about more than just talking about the issues at hand. With your forward-thinking process, I'm here to respectfully request that this board creates and approve a policy that protects students' and parents' rights, specifically regarding the Get to Know survey that asks about non-conventional pronouns. Please stop promoting propaganda that defies biology and establish a policy that requires the use of students' given's name. Activists in schools are working very hard to coerce, groom, and promote transgenderism, and even bully those who don't embrace said ideology, and doing it without knowledge or consent of parents. Sometimes the problem at hand are a few individuals, or teachers, or coaches, who act without the school board or administrator's knowledge. So why not create a policy, approve a policy, and adhere to a policy to, again, protect students, parents, and this school district? Thank you.
Thank you, Suzanne. Okay, Chuck Chadwick.
Chuck Chadwick, 3519 Ivy Drive. Speaking as a parent of five, this is a scary time to raise a child. There are many outside influences that we must battle against to try and keep our children on the path we believe is best for them. We fight this battle on many fronts, and we never expect that we will have to engage the battle, in that battle with our schools. As a parent, we all know the struggle between all the cooking, the cleaning, the nose wiping, the diaper changing, the rides, the movies, the roller rink, the sports, the studying, the trying not to be late to the bus stop, the being late to the bus stop, the colds, the flus, the injuries, the homework, the talks, the arguments, the wins, the losses, the chickenpox, the tears of joy, the tears of sadness, the messes, the chores, the laundry, the bills, the vacations, and everything else, we work very hard at shaping our children into who we want them to be. We spend countless hours teaching them everything we can to help them become happy, healthy, and positively contributing members of society. We work a 12-hour day shift, followed immediately by a 12-hour night shift. Somewhere in between, we work a swing shift or two, and then we must find time to eat, sleep, and maybe even take a moment for ourselves. But that is usually spent behind a locked door, or it doesn't last very long. It is usually a tight window of maybe 30 to 45 seconds before the next mom or dad echoes throughout the house. If you make one minute, you count it as a blessing. We also can't call off because we live at work. The list is not in there, but for the purposes of everyone going home sometime this week, I will stop. I do not have the time to effectively teach them math, or English, or science, and so on. Conveniently enough, the government has decided I will pay taxes to them to educate my children in those subjects and other academic courses. Tax money pays for my children to have that service provided to them. Taxes are paid. Taxes pay for the school buildings across the street, and the salaries of the people that work there as well. Considering the emotional time and financial investments parents have made and continue to make concerning their child's education, it is only natural to keep a close eye on what our children are learning in and out of class. Currently, I have children in three different buildings, and next year I will have at least one child in all four buildings. I feel we have a pretty good lens to look through when it comes to evaluating the education and experience that the district is providing our children with those previously mentioned public funds. Currently sitting at $16,395 per student per year, interestingly enough, the average private school tuition for PA K-12 is $8,160. Weird how the private sector does it better for less. I wonder why that is. Anyway, I have seen firsthand how children are being treated differently. I must say, excluding a few examples, the education our children receive is outstanding. Sadly, however, I cannot say the same for the experience. I know you are all well aware that I have expressed concerns about a student walkout that occurred on March 11th at the middle school. I have still not received answers to many of the questions that I asked way back on March 11th and the following days. Even after considering that I was told by the district that they had answered all the questions they can legally answer, I thought it would be a good idea to remind everyone of those apparently unanswerable questions. I wonder if the parents here or the ones watching the video will think we should know the answers to these questions and possibly start asking the district themselves as well. To avoid boredom, I have mixed in a few new questions to keep this from getting stale. I'll start with some new ones. Is it true there is an English teacher at the middle school who asks all her students their pronouns and openly tells them that she is bisexual? If so, do you find this to be appropriate? Would you find it to be appropriate if it was a male teacher telling a female student about his sexual orientation? This is not something an English teacher should be talking about with their students. It isn't something any teacher should be talking about with their students. We have heard it all before. Just do your job. It shouldn't even need to be said, yet it does, and that is a real shame. Stay in your lane. The school district and its employees need to be reminded to stay in their lane. They should be, there should be no activist teachers forcing their personal beliefs onto our children. They should teach the subject they were hired to teach, and that is the end of it. The district and its employees should not be trying to push onto its parents, push into the parents' lane because on that hypothetical highway...
That's your four minutes. Thank you. Or Chuck, I'm sorry.
Hello, Jamie Ling, Burnett Drive, Murraysville. I am here to discuss the addition of the gender identity non-binary to the family ID registration form. Many people, scientists included, often confuse sex with gender. The NIH writes that sex refers to biological differences between females and males, including chromosomes, sex hormones, and andogenous hormonal profiles, while gender refers to socially constructed and enacted roles and behaviors. So more simply stated, sex is a genotype and gender is an identity. Classifying athletes by gender and not by sex is a misnomer in sports. Although instances of intersex chromosomal anomalies such as Kleinfelter's or Turner Syndrome exist where androgynous sex is a reality, they are rare and would have special circumstances and are a topic for another discussion. So what happens when an athlete registers for sports based on their gender? A biological female or male can compete on the team of their choice. For the most part, males don't have to worry about competing with females, but females do suffer when competing against males because of morphological differences. This creates an unequal playing field for women. Title IX guarantees separate but equal opportunities for each sex. Title IX states that no person in the U.S. shall, on the basis of sex, be excluded from participation in, be denied the benefits of, or be subjected to discrimination under any education program or activity receiving federal financial assistance. The argument in Title IX over the word sex and whether it includes gender identity or not is not settled law, and therefore, no federally funded institution is obligated to use gender identity to determine where an individual participates, although it may be required by the district for reporting purposes. Family ID's website advertises that if you can type, you can use Family ID. Any forms can be created in minutes. Does this mean that someone at FR created and edited the form asking for gender identity as the indicator of which team participation will occur on? Is the only reason for this Article 16-C, the disclosure under 1949 Act 14 under 1604-C, letters B1I and B3I? If so, then both biological sex and gender should be surveyed as Title IX, and what the term sex covers is not settled law. Note, this addition to 1949 Act 14 1604-C was made in 2012, when some terminology that exists today did not exist or was not as prevalent. So, critical thinking-wise, if gender identity is determined in the future by law to be included under the umbrella of the word sex in Title IX, whose Title IX gender rights will take precedence? Biological women, transgender women, non-binary? As a woman and a mother of four swimmers, three female, one male, allowing biological men into women's facilities violates their privacy and their safety. Sorry. It can cause undue harm via mental distress, especially for those women who have suffered past violations. This equally applies to males. If biological males registering as female or non-binary are allowed to compete in biological female sports and use female facilities, how can FR guarantee a biological female's privacy and ultimately their mental and physical safety as currently guaranteed under Title IX? I propose that FR changes their form for determination of team play to sex from the current gender and stop using third-party entities for collection of our athletes' data. Thank you for your time.
Hey, Jamie, thank you. All right, that's the end of public comments for the committee, the whole meeting. You just got here?
I got here at like 7:30.
You didn't sign in?
No.
You got here before the meeting started, though, right?
Thank you.
No, did you get here before the meeting started?
I thought it was 7:30. Did it start at 7:30 or was it earlier?
No, it started a little bit after 7:30.
Yeah.
What's your name?
It's Fran Jolimey. I'm at 4223 Hills Church Road, Murraysville. I have permission to speak?
Pardon?
Okay, yeah. So I just want to comment that this is my third school board meeting, and it's been an honor to be here, and I thank each of you for all your service to our community. And I just want to reiterate all the comments that have been spoken tonight. I heartily agree, and I am very disturbed by the lack of transparency that I see. I still cannot find the curriculum information on the website, and I do think it's in your policy or our policy that that be stated. I'm just very disturbed. I've spoken, I've written an email, I've spoken at these meetings, I don't get any answers, and I don't know if I'd vote for you again. I'm sorry. I think I deserve transparency. I've been in this community 30 years, I've raised three children, and at this point, I would not send my grandchildren to the school the way things are going. So I just hope you take a serious look and provide some answers. I come to these meetings, and there's no feedback given to me of my concerns, and I find that very disconcerting. I don't know if it's even heard. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right, that's it for public comments for the committee, the whole meeting. Solicitors' comments.
Thank you, Mr. President. Most of my comments were in executive session, and I just urge the public that sometimes these discussions take more than just a knee-jerk reaction. The law is constantly changing. We're advising the board appropriately through our administration, and so please bear with them. And sometimes, when you think it's a lack of transparency, it would be a violation of certain rights of people for us to speak out, and although we may want to divulge that information, we're prohibited from. So bear with them. I don't think, I speak for the board when I say that none of them want a lack of transparency here, and I think they're all doing their due diligence on all the issues that you raise. Other than that, I have nothing else, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Okay, Dr. Pyners, you're up for, we're on consent agenda items, we're on college, high school dual credit agreement.
So the item that's on the agenda is our college and high school dual credit agreement with Seton Hill University. This is a yearly agreement. This is the opportunity to allow our students to take classes while in high school, but get college credit for them, and it's at a greatly reduced cost. The cost for Seton Hill credit, I believe, this year is $230, which is a great reduction from actually taking the classes at Seton Hill. We have a number of universities that we have these agreements with, and we have many students who take advantage of this opportunity and have saved our parents a lot of tuition money. We have kids graduating with a number of credits already toward their college degree.
Okay, next training or language.
Yes, that is my item as well. This is the agreement to purchase materials for letters training for our elementary teachers. The training itself is offered at no cost. We do have to pay for the materials. Our teachers will be trained using their professional development hours. I did ask Jen DeFolvio to come and just speak briefly about this training and why we're proceeding with it for our elementary teachers, and I know she also invited somebody from the IU who's actually going to be doing the training and can maybe answer any other questions.
Yes, thank you. We are very excited to partner with Jason Stragand from the Westmoreland Intermediate Unit. He is a certified letters trainer. Letters is language essentials for teachers of reading and spelling, and it is the science behind reading. Our plan is to train all K-2 teachers next year, starting with year one of Letters, as well as all of our three-to-five ELA teachers. In addition to that, we will train our reading specialists and, specialists and our learning support teachers. So we will have our entire ELA team, K-5, fully trained in the science of reading in this new edition of Letters. There are two years of training, and some of that training occurs online, and some of it is in person. And so Jason will work with us to schedule those trainings for this year one. We will have all, probably about 60 teachers trained this year in year one. They will then go through year two next year, and we'll have a certificate of completion. And next year, we will also, at the same time, train any brand-new teachers in year one as well. So we will have a rolling system where we can then know that all of our ELA teachers are fully trained with that foundational understanding of the science of reading.
Anybody have any questions?
Jason, do you have anything you want to add about the importance of this training?
You have to get to the microphone if you're going to speak.
Thanks for giving me a few seconds. What is nice about the content is teachers get three different opportunities to engage in it. So they'll be reading about the material first. There's some online coursework that they can engage in. they can engage, and then the face-to-face training. I'm sure meetings ahead, you guys will hear about the science of reading, and there's even some legislation that might be passed. So Franklin Regional will actually be the very first school district in the county to take this on, which is super exciting. I know I'm excited to partner with the district and share my passion of reading with the teachers, so thanks for the opportunity.
Thank you.
Could you explain a little bit what is added on to what we're currently doing? You know, reading's been a focus for a while, trying to, I know through the years, we've, as we've put in our new ELA curriculums, we've added additional things to what the curriculum was to fill gaps. What does this do as a training to complement what our teachers already have? Is it reinforcing current skills? Is it, what is it adding new as a layer to what parents can expect or, you know, add on and interact with the parents themselves, help them have tools? What can they expect to see for their early development in their children to help them become better readers faster?
I can answer part of that. One of the things we find is that our teachers are coming to us from their education degrees, and they're trained well in lots of areas. But our K-5 teachers have to know how to teach reading, spelling, math, science, social studies, all of the things that we expect of them in K-5. And some of this science of reading, these pieces are not explicitly taught at the college and university level. So in addition to the fact that we do have teachers who may have been teaching for quite a while and need to learn the new science that is coming from the research, and this is actually a new addition even of the letters training, I can let Jason speak to that a little bit. So anyone who has previously received letters training is eligible for this new training because it is significantly different.
Anybody else have any other questions? Okay, thank you very much.
This is Jamie Claudio. Just, Jason, could you address the fundamental skills in terms of what we would be teaching, in terms of fluency, in terms of phonics and phonemic awareness?
I think I heard the question in its entirety. I think one thing to keep in mind that Letters is not a curriculum, so it's a set of strategies that are evidence-based, so no matter what kind of reading curriculum you have or you have adopted, it generates good conversation around the teaching of reading. And as Jen shared, there's not a lot of really good instruction that happens as teachers leave their college or university and enter the teaching field. So if anything, it would generate a high-level conversation on how to teach reading using the science of reading. There's five big ideas in reading that curriculum should address. Oftentimes, the basels that districts purchase, they don't have the five ideas of reading incorporated because they're trying to market a curriculum that can be sold nationwide. So by generating conversation around the five big ideas of reading, teachers are able to then reach into their back pocket and pull out strategies when the curriculum falls short. So the five big ideas that Letters supports would be phonemic awareness, phonics, oral reading fluency, vocabulary, and reading comprehension.
Answer your question, Dr. P.
It does, thank you. I just wanted to make sure that everyone realized that we are teaching all components of reading.
Got it. Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, thank you. Okay, Ms. Willis, Duquesne University affiliation.
I'm actually going to look at agenda item number three and four together with Duquesne University affiliation agreement and Slippery Rock University affiliation agreement, and these two agreements allow us to have our student-teacher program, which allows us to have college students come in and work along with our current teachers. So we need these two agreements to be able to do the student-teacher placement throughout the school year.
Any questions on? You're forward, nothing? Okay, you're still up.
Number five is policy review second read. There are three policies for your approval this evening that were reviewed and approved as the first read back in April. It would be Policy 610, purchases subject to bid and quotation; Policy 611, purchases budgeted. And those two policies are updated annually. We receive new dollar amounts to be put into the policy each and every year, so you will always see those. And then Policy 816, district social media.
Any questions on policy? Okay, personnel.
And then, under the personnel agenda this evening?
Page 19.
Under certified personnel, we are asking for your approval for a change in a leave status. So this is a employee who has been approved prior, but it's just the type of change, the type of leave is changing. And then items two, three, four, and five are learning sabbaticals for either all of 2223 or portions of 2223, and one that is a semester each in 2223 and into the 2324 school year. We also have one substitute teacher to approve. Under support personnel, items one and two, we have two retirements of our special education aides, both at the primary building at the conclusion of this school year. And we also are asking for your approval of substitutes under the following categories that were listed. And then, under supplemental personnel, we're going to ask for your approval for the list of winter coordinators for the 2223 season. Those names are listed for boys' basketball, girls' basketball, wrestling, and swimming and diving. And then items two, three, and four are the approval of teachers, special education aides, and transportation aides for our extended school year program, which will happen this summer. And items five and six are to approve the hiring of summer help for our technology department as well as our summer maintenance workers. And on the agenda, it's listed as a rate to be determined by the 2223 non-contracted support positions pay schedule, and you will be approving that list or that a list is for your consideration for approval later on in the board meeting, so.
Okay, any questions? Thank you. Okay, Mr. Matzie, middle school stage repairs.
I'm asking you for consideration for repairs to the middle school stage equipment and its yearly inspection as item number seven on the agenda. This will be part of the 2223 capital plan. Reason for asking now is to get it scheduled. They're already backed up past August, so this would be to get everything safe and ready for our next big events on the stage.
Any questions on the middle school stage repairs?
Mr. Matzie, what are you running into as far as supply chain, as far as getting materials? Is this a reasoning to try to get a jump on it so we don't get caught short?
On some of the items I will be asking in the next few months, yes, but this particular one, they have so many inspections to do, they try to get done during the summer months. The repair, their repair crew actually does their inspections also. So that's why I'm trying to get this done before students come back and we have a really big event at our stages.
Anybody else have a question? Okay, high school stage repairs.
For your consideration, the same thing. We've conducted testing on both of these items, and this is for 2223 capital plan. This is also for repairs before the next big event.
Questions on high school stage repairs? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Shreckengos.
Good evening. I have several items on the agenda for this evening. The first one is uninterrupted power supplies. These are battery backup units for our network gear to keep it up and running when the power goes out, which it does periodically in the district. We will be purchasing 25 of those. The next item is backup as a service. This will be a service, they'll be working with a third-party provider that will be backing up our critical data off-site nightly so that we have a fresh copy of it if anything ever happened.
Any questions so far? Okay, keep going.
Digital signage, I mentioned this before, we're looking at to unify our digital signage within the district. This will be the, really, the infrastructure in the beginning phase of allowing us to connect all our buildings with our digital signing and advertisement and, you know, our internal messages that we also could tie in with some other security things.
Questions on digital signs?
High school TV studio, the high school TV studio is over five years old. It is out of warranty. We're having some issues this year. We can't even get it fixed. We had to do a number of workarounds. It's time to replace that equipment. Next item is our high school programming lab. I'm still working with the teacher on this. We've had, have more money budgeted for this lab, but right now, we were looking to purchase some desktop computers, and we're still in the discussions of what else we might add to that, to that computer lab, or if we're going to even need to add any more to that computer lab for this school year. These are just regular desktop computers they'll use for programming within the building.
Any questions on that? Okay.
Multimedia, high school multimedia, Mac lab. This is a Macintosh lab. This lab is at the end of the life this year. We were having a hard time keeping those computers running. They're very slow. It is time to replace those, so we'll be purchasing, before we had, I think, 27, 27 Macs in that classroom. I worked with the teacher, we're actually reduced that number, I believe, to 16 computers and then a couple laptops because we do have, periodically have students that want to take that class while they're, you know, online learning, and we need to provide them with a laptop that can handle, to run the software that is required for that classroom. We're purchasing five, I think, four or five laptops with that purchase also.
Any questions on the multimedia lab?
So these are higher-end?
Yes, actually, they're, they used to have the old ones, now they have the new one. They're called, I can't even think what the name is, but they're a little box with a Mac monitor, yeah.
And did we, had we previously delayed these?
Yes, we did. Yes, we deferred them last year.
Yeah.
Yeah, and we had a rough time keeping them going this year, yeah.
Thanks.
Project Lead-Away replacement iPads. These iPads are four years old. We will be replacing those at the fourth and fifth grade levels. It's time to replace those. Next item is the high school business labs. We have two labs at the high school. We'll be purchasing regular desktop computers, and same with all these labs, actually, except for the Mac lab. We are reusing the monitors where it's appropriate, where we can, so we don't have to buy additional equipment. So we plan to, you know, utilize the existing monitors and just replace the hardware in those labs.
Any questions on the high school lab? Okay.
Number 17 is teacher Chromebooks. We're making, you know, we're making, you know, we're moving toward Chromebooks for teachers due to the expense and that we're a Google School district, where all the teachers, we already replaced, I think, we did 60 earlier this school year at the intermediate building. We just are getting ready to deploy another 100 teacher Chromebooks, and then with this purchase, we'll pretty much replace almost three-quarters of our laptop fleet within the district.
Questions on laptops, admin laptops?
And the admin, these are admin teacher laptops. There are, you know, our admin users need Windows laptops, and we have a few specialized users within the district that have certain softwares that won't run on Chromebooks that will need to provide them with a computer, a laptop, that will actually run those softwares. And that's what that purchase will be for, but mostly for admin users.
Any questions for Mr. Shreckengos?
As usual, you're running all this through the CoStar program?
Yes, sir. Everything has multiple quotes, and I also run it through either Peppa or CoStars, whatever they belong to.
I've reviewed some of the bids, and you've been getting for the taxpayers and for the school district phenomenal pricing.
I've been trying to get multiple quotes and...
Yeah, you've done a really good job because I think a lot of times the concern of the public is, you know, we're spending a lot of money and we're not getting a bang for our buck, but I can just go on record to say that what you've been doing is getting the top-end quality stuff for the school district at the right price. So thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Cow. Bus and van drivers.
Good evening. For your approval tonight, item number 19 is our list of A.J. Myers bus and van drivers to complete the 2122 school year.
Any question on bus drivers and van drivers? Okay, bus stops.
Number 19 is approval for our last time of 2122 bus stops. There was a separate attachment for your review in the admin section.
Questions on bus stops? Okay, we're moving on to lunch prices.
Number 21, we are looking for your approval for next year, the 2223 lunch prices.
Any questions on the lunch prices? Okay, Metz Culinary.
And last but not least is number 22 is our annual renewal to approve Metz Culinary Food Service to be our provider for next year, 2223 school year again.
Any questions on Metz Culinary contract? Thank you, Mrs. Cow. Okay, Dr. Pines, you're back up again.
All right, item 23 is proposed school board meeting dates for the 2223 school year. Those are in the agenda items. Some of the meetings had to be combined, and there are asterisks with the reasons listed below if there were any questions on that.
Any questions on calendar? Okay.
Item 24 is a annual memorandum that is signed with the municipality of Murraysville Police Department.
We do this every year.
Yep.
So, any questions on the police department? Okay. All right. Next up is summer sports camps. Anybody have any questions on summer sports camps before we go any farther? Who's due? Who? Board members have questions. Who said that? This is for the board. Okay, hearing now, we're moving on to preapproval of May bills.
Good evening. Because there is only one meeting in May, similar to December and July, we're asking for your preapproval for the list of bills for the month of May. You'll be provided with that list on May 12th. The checks will be dated on the 16th, and if there are no issues, then they'll be mailed out on the 17th.
Any questions on preapproval of May bills? Gifts and grants.
This month, we have $117 to the Fund-A-Mill program from FR staff, $500 for the Elementary Science Olympiad from the Spectroscopy Society of Pittsburgh. They've been a repeat supporter for the Elementary Science Olympiad, and then $200 from Grantmakers of Western Pennsylvania for Remake Learning activities.
Any questions on gifts and grants? Okay, number 28, budget transfers.
This month, we have $971.07 budget transfers for the general fund.
Any questions on budget transfers? Okay, number 29, senior portrait service agreement, page 144.
Periodically, we solicit proposals for school pictures. It's really done in two different processes, one exclusive for senior portraits, and then the K-11 portraits are a separate contract. This is specific to the senior portrait portion of that process. The current vendor, Reglone Photography, notified the district that they would not be renewing the agreement with the district. So we solicited proposals through an RFP process. We received three proposals. Mr. Suvak... Mr. Suvak, Ms. Danielle DeSantis, who's the yearbook advisor at the high school, myself reviewed the proposals, interviewed the recommended vendor, which is Fisher Photos. They're a local vendor. They have had some experience with them taking photographs for some of the athletic teams, which are also part of this contract, getting those photos in the yearbook. So this would be covering the graduating classes of 23, 24, and 25 with optional renewals available.
Any questions on senior portrait service agreement? Okay, non-contracted support positions.
Yes, annually, we bring forward this list of non-contract support positions. These are positions that are needed by the district that aren't covered by a CBA. Some of them are hourly positions as well as event workers for athletic and extracurricular events and day-to-day subs. These have remained relatively stagnant, the rates for these, for a number of years. But given the labor market right now and the challenge finding candidates, we felt it was necessary to increase the rates for almost all the positions across the board, some of which, when you look at it from a percentage standpoint, are rather large percentages, but they're justified when you look around the market and benchmark across other districts and whatnot. So the item that has the most impact on the overall budget is obviously the day-to-day substitute teachers. We've heard a lot about that. We're, you know, having difficulty filling the positions as it is. Most of those daily substitute rates would go up $10 a day and then the district substitute, which is somebody that commits to being Franklin Regional five days a week, would be increased $25 per day under this proposal to $150.
Any questions on non-contracted support positions?
Yes, can you, can you advise some of the comparable salaries for substitute teachers?
Across other districts? Yeah, I mean, right now, it's really extenuating circumstances that, like a district sub like that, we've seen as high as $200 a day. So we may be back more often than annually if this still doesn't get the job done, but a lot of them, they still have a starting rate of around $100, maybe $120. You'll see in ours, we escalated after they've provided service for 30 or 40 days, adding additional increments to try to reward the people that are providing additional service to Franklin Regional. So again, we're going to try to be responsive, but if you look at a statewide survey, $100 seems to be a common number, but it has certainly been changing throughout this school year. And as I said, we know some districts are paying upwards of $200 just for that day-to-day sub. Some places, there's been some flexibility bringing back Peasars retirees to serve as a substitute teacher or even a paraprofessional and they're getting, you know, a similar rate to that too. So the market is somewhat disjointed right now and there just aren't enough individuals coming out with teaching certifications over the last 10 years. It's challenging.
Any other questions? Okay, procurement gratification.
Yes, electricity procurement. Again, this is another disjointed market. Typically, we're locking in a fixed-term contract. We typically like to be locked in for two to three years. When we go out, we utilize, continue to utilize Keytech's Energy as a consultant. They also help us through the procurement process, bidding our energy contracts. They've been monitoring the market for us for really the last 12 months, but the prices have continued to elevate. Our contracts expire here in May of 2022 and right now, the rates are so high that a fixed-term contract is not even being recommended. We are going to try to go on a, essentially, an hourly rate contract based on market rates for a period of four months with the hopes of things beginning to stabilize and then continue to monitor the market and look for opportunities to lock into a fixed-term contract again. The difficulty is we're coming off historically low energy rates over the last 10-year period. So even when we do lock into a fixed-term contract, it is almost certainly going to be greater than the rates that we have been paying. Earlier, about mid-April, we tried to lock into a fixed-term contract. These are time-sensitive. That's why the board has authorized us to essentially execute the contracts and then we bring it to ratify in the past. And about 45 minutes expired between the time that I received the email and the contract documents and I returned the signed documents and in that period of time, the vendor pulled their offer of the pricing and that's how quickly and volatile the markets are. So that's where we're at right now, something different that we haven't had to do, paying these hourly rates over the 11 years that I've been here. But as I said, they'll continue to monitor the market and look for opportunities and several other school districts in Westmoreland County are also in the same situation and work with Keytech, so we're not unique.
Okay, any questions? Moving on to Northern Westmoreland Career Technology.
This is the annual approval of the NWCTC budget and Franklin Regional share of that Our proportionate share actually declined slightly as compared to the prior year as a result in a, of a slight decrease in the enrollment at Northern Westmoreland. As we'll talk about in the budget presentation, overall, our current technology center student enrollment has actually increased significantly year over year, but that's a result of us sending more students to Forbes Road and again, a handful less here to Northern Westmoreland. So overall, a decrease of $16,000 compared to the prior year for our share of their budget.
Any questions on the Northern Career Budget? Okay, 2021-22 fund balance transfers.
Again, this is an annual item that we bring forward. Each year, as part of the general fund budget, we include line items that are dedicated transfers to the capital and technology funds. We've talked about that a little bit when those budgets were presented in February and March. And around this time of year, we have a better idea as to how we are operating financially in terms of performance against our budget in the current year as well as the prior year. So once again, we have an opportunity to transfer additional funds above and beyond what those budgeted amounts were. So we are recommending a transfer of $1,850,000 to the Capital Reserve Fund, a transfer of $875,000 to the Technology Fund, and then there's also a resolution to commit $200,000 of the district's unassigned fund balance for the purpose of curriculum materials. The Finance Committee has discussed for a while now a desire to earmark or commit a portion of fund balance for curriculum materials so that if we're going through a cycle that the, you know, it's larger in nature than what would typically be needed, that we're not having to make a decision to delay curriculum or split curriculum over multiple years in order to afford it, we'll have some fund balance set aside to handle any one-time spikes that might occur related to curricular materials.
Any questions on fund balance? Okay, proposed final general fund budget.
All right. I do have a presentation, if we can bring that up on the screen, just to provide some slides as to what I'll be talking about. I won't go through every line item within the budget, but looking at the budget summary document on page 189 of your packet. Just briefly reviewing the guidelines and the timeline for the budget. Obviously, in December, we adopted the resolution to stay within the Act One Index, so we didn't have to go through the preliminary budget process. The next required step is to adopt the proposed final general fund budget and that's what we're recommending this evening. That step has to be done at least 30 days prior to the adoption of the final budget, which we would plan to do at the June 30th board meeting. Once tonight's proposed final general fund budget is approved, it will be available for public inspection on the district website and at the district administration offices and public notice will be provided 10 days prior to the adoption of the final general fund budget and those are all requirements of school code.
John, could you just repeat that for the people in the audience so that they know that it's available for the public?
Sure. Tonight's proposed final general fund budget will be available on the district's website as well as a hard copy in the district's administrative offices. It's available for review up through when we would present and adopt the final general fund budget on June 20th. So we have roughly six weeks to continue to, you know, make tweaks, additions, removals, anything that the board desires to this budget.
Thank you.
Sure. Again, here's just the timeline of the steps that we've completed so far and what is still upcoming. So again, I'm not going to talk about every single line item. On page 189, the first nine line items, which are the building budgets, counseling services and health services, all remained relatively the same from prior years. The first line item that changed significantly is transportation. Next year will be the first year of a new five-year agreement with A.J. Meyers, so we were anticipating essentially inflationary increases in those contractual rates, but within the last two months, everyone is obviously aware of fuel prices and the spike that has gone on there since the end of February. So this $225,000 increase reflects an additional $110,000 of fuel costs and that's still somewhat optimistic that we can lock in a rate lower than what we're seeing right now. That $110,000 would be if we were able to lock in at a fixed price of about $3.25 a gallon. We participate in the WIU Joint Purchasing Consortium for Fuel. We've met several times over the spring to discuss potentially bidding that. Everyone is of like mind right now that we're going to hold off, again, to try to wait for more advantageous pricing. And my guess is that typically, we purchase fuel for the entire year. We're going to end up doing it in increments this year in order to, you know, cost average where we end up being so that we're not locking into a bad price for the entire year. Obviously, most districts are in a position where they will need to complete a bid prior to the start of next school year, just based on how these past two years have gone. And at the end of the 2020 school year, we were sitting on excess gallons that nobody wanted. The cost of fuel was negative $40 a barrel or oil at that point in time and now we've come full circle two years later, so. The next line item that I'll speak to is curriculum development. You'll see an increase of about $112,000 there. That essentially gets us to where we believe the annual run rate should be for curriculum. That allocates about $400,000 for major curricular purchases annually as well as the recurring software and Project Lead the Way materials as well as some of the exam fees. So that's 600 roughly $1,000 is what we would call the run rate if there were a year that we would need more than $400,000 for a particular adoption. That's when we would tap into those committed funds, should the board approve that resolution. The next line item I'll talk about is line 16. It's kind of a catch-all, but it, the majority of it is made up of district tuitions, both to the CTCs, which I talked about earlier. Our enrollment at Forbes Road has actually increased about 20 students this year, so that is having a significant increase in our budget as we pay a tuition rate there. Our cyber and cyber charter school tuitions increased about $50,000. We are seeing somewhat elevated enrollment this particular year, but through the Westmoreland Online Academy and other measures that the district's taking to try to recruit those students back, we're hopeful that we'll be able to bring that enrollment back down to the historical levels, which is typically closer to 60. Offsetting those increases in that line item, last year, we had included an additional budgetary reserve specific to SR3 within the SR3 grant, which is part of the American Recovery Plan. 20% of that grant had to be used to address learning loss. At the time that we adopted last year's budget, we weren't entirely sure what those expenditures would look like. We've since completed that grant application process, so there will be additional information forthcoming about how, what programs the district will be instituting to address learning loss that's occurred over the last two years, but that's the reason why you're seeing an overall decrease of $86,000 is a reduction in budgetary reserve. It's in other places within the budget at this point, offsetting those increases in tuitions that I spoke about earlier. Debt service line item, item 19, you'll see as a significant decrease of $762,000. This brings it down to $3.2 million and that's what our run rate will be through 2050. That reflects all the current bond issuances and the actual amortization schedules. Related to that decrease in the expenditure, last year, we had also used a significant amount of committed fund balance for the purpose of phasing in that debt of slightly more than $1 million. That's going to go down to $100,000 in this 22-23 budget and then that will all be spent. So really, on a net basis, it's an increase of about $260,000 in debt service and then we are at our run rate within the budget. I'm skipping all the way down. I mean, the largest chunk of our budget is really the salaries and benefits portion. I've said it before, education is essentially a service industry. Any service industry can expect to spend about 75% of their budget on salaries and benefits. We're no different. So if you look at line 32, which is the total salaries, benefits, and insurance, you'll see an increase of about $1.2 million. Obviously, that's a big number, but that's a percentage increase of only 2.61%, which is pretty favorable in the current environment. Overall, expenditures increase $856,000 or 1.34% as compared to the prior year budget. Any questions on the expenditure side of the budget before I continue?
Any questions on the budget?
Just quickly on the revenue side, on page 190, you'll see local revenues increased $1.7 million. This budget does include a proposed increase in the district's millage rate of 2.75 mills. It also includes increases in earned income taxes, really to transfer taxes. Those line items have continued to have strong collections in the current year. In the state revenue line item, we're budgeting an increase of $531,000. That includes 25% of the proposed increases for basic education funding and special education funding that were a part of Governor Wolf's budget proposal in February. His budget was, included a historic investment for education. We are not optimistic that it will all go through by any means, but we think 25% is a reasonable portion, given the state's strong revenue collections this year. Being an election year, they will want to keep constituents somewhat happy and education is frequently an area of concern for the general public. And then it also includes just formulaic increases for the retirement and social security line items and the rest of the state budget is flat-funded. Federal revenue, you'll see a decrease of $720,000. This is mostly due to the timing of our SR3 grant. Last year, we had included it all in the budget, not knowing how it would ultimately be spent. It came out relatively late in the spring. We have a better understanding, again, of our, how we're planning on spending that. We're actually going to be spending those funds essentially equally over the next two years. So this year, it includes 50% of that SR3 grant and all those federal funds are on a reimbursable basis, so we don't actually receive the revenue until the expenditures are incurred, so it's not as if there's a timing issue with, that item isn't playing into any of the favorable variances that I mentioned earlier when we were talking about the additional transfers. So overall, total revenues increased $1.5 million when you're factoring in the proposed millage increase and that's about 2.46% compared to the prior year. After incorporating our planned usage for Peasars committed fund balance and again, the last remaining $116,000 of the debt service phasing committed fund balance, there's a remaining deficit of $536,000 that we will continue to work on between now and June. With that said, we're somewhat comfortable, again, recommending that we could potentially use our unassigned fund balance to handle that. We have $385,000 of budgetary reserve included within the budget that we hope we wouldn't have to spend next year. And then we also have what we hope would be one-time cost that the fuel market will somewhat settle between now and the end of the next budget cycle. So as I said, that's, that's the topic for additional discussion, as is everything within the budget that we're presenting tonight. On page 188 of your packet, we've typically provided this range of millage scenarios just so that you can see different options and what the resulting impact would be on the district's budget in the current year, the ending fund balance, as well as the impact on the taxpayers and a tax bill at a few different data points. So you'll see it goes from a tax increase to the Act One Index, which would have been 3.52 mills, to the recommendation that we have in the proposed final general fund budget of 2.7 mills, all the way over to if we were not to do anything from a millage standpoint this year and what the resulting impact would be. So based on the recommendation, the district median property owner would have an increase of $95 to their tax bill for next year. of $95 to their tax bill for next year. Just to review what we've pulled a whole budget picture together, February, we approved the capital reserve fund budget. We're projecting an ending balance in that particular fund of $8.7 million at the end of this year. Next year's budget had $2.2 million worth of expenditures, and over the next five-year period, based on the annual transfer of $500,000, that fund would remain solvent. Similarly, with the technology fund, we're projecting an ending fund balance of $2.3 million at the end of this year. Next year's budgetary expenditures were $810,000, and again, based on the annual transfer of $425,000, that fund will remain solvent over the next five years. So future dates to continue to review the budget, we have a finance committee meeting on May 26. The primary purpose of that meeting will be to develop the recommendation for the full board. We'll present the final general fund budget at the June 6 committee of the whole meeting, and then we'll be asking the board to vote on that budget at the June 20 regular meeting. Any questions on the district's general fund budget for '22, '23?
Can you speak to the SRS money? You said we have 50% of it left, and we're going to...
We actually have it all, we have it all left. We haven't actually spent any of the SR3 yet.
Okay.
We spent SR1, we're in the process of spending SR2. SR3, we're planning to use 50% in the '22, '23 year, and then the remaining 50% in the '23, '24 year. So that federal revenue line item should remain relatively consistent next year's budget and also the following year.
So in three years, we'll get slammed?
Well, some, I won't say slammed, some of the costs will perhaps go away, those items that are perhaps being used to address learning loss. We would hope that we could catch everybody up, and those would become one-time costs with the one-time dollars. We'll see, we're using some of those funds for the development of WOA, so in a way, that's bringing dollars back into the district as well, if we're keeping students who are interested in an online option in the district rather than going to a cyber charter school.
Okay.
So we won't project getting slammed just yet, but there is somewhat of a fiscal cliff. This fiscal, federal stimulus will have been spent by the end of the '24 fiscal year.
Thank you.
Any other questions for John? Thank you.
Well, I think Tracy, too, that's partly why you see where we came in with our recommendation with 2.75. That number didn't kind of come out of the air. We were, you know, it has a risk of dipping into the general fund to make up some loss, but it also, looking historically where we've come out with our budgets, we feel it's a safe place where we can be under, be trending to come under the index. If you see, our allowable millage increase was 3.52 to come at. So the finance committee wanted to start it to trend down, to take some, get out of the trend of being at the index, because we've done it for a few years now as we've gone into our debt service cycle and different things like that. So we wanted to cycle out of that trend, but with those projected potential things years in advance, we didn't want to radically shift too far and put ourselves in a bad situation, as you would look back through the millage history where we've gone to .5, to 1, to 0, and we've put ourselves in a bad situation where we've had to recover because we didn't have resources to, in this continuous cycle, to do certain things of whether it be curriculum that we're trying to replenish and get that into a good, healthy situation or different other things. So that's where we pulled back to that certain number where there is a deficit where we may have to, but we're trying to find that spot where we can ease some of that burden, but not too drastically right away because of those potential things two, three years from now.
I think Mr., is this working? I think Mr. Perry hit the nail on the head in looking to programs like WOA and bringing students back into our district, so we're not losing all of that tuition, and that way, we can level off the percentage increase in the taxes.
Any other comments? You're none, I need a...
I would just like to make a comment that, you know, over the trend of the many years, we've actually done a good job at lowering, instead of always going to the maximum. We've actually tried to do a good job to be prudent, to drop it down a little bit, and yet still, with the volatility of our market, I think we're all quite aware of what's going on, and I think Mr. Perry does a pretty commendable job trying to work with a lot of these places to try to secure a good range of pricing for us, but I think, as you're seeing, John, a lot of people don't want to commit, and understandably so, because that would be kind of a financial suicide for some of these people. But in lieu of all of what I'm hearing, this is a kind of a plus that we're trying to do the best we can to keep it down as best we can for all the taxpayers without always constantly having a tax increase going up. But yet, we also want to make sure we have a cushion, because in many years in the past, what ended up happening is people took it down to nothing, and then everybody got caught short, and all of a sudden, there was no money anywhere. And as far as trying to bring other kids back into the schools, to the different programs, yeah, the more we can do that, the better. If you drive around a community, something I've been noticing is there's actually been some construction going on. Thank God, there's some revenue coming into the school district with some of the stuff that's going on, because that's really what's needed, is some money to help fill the coffers up, so to speak. But overall, we're really trying to do and hold a fine line on the expenses. As you can hear, some of the things that do need to get purchased, they're really doing a good job of getting the best bang for the buck, and yet not shortchange the school district or the students by putting something in that's inadequate. So we're trying to do the best of both worlds. Just wanted to make that go on the record. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any other questions? Need a motion to adjourn to committee the whole meeting?
Motion to adjourn. Before we do that, I just wanted to, for the curriculum committee members, there'd been a request for me to possibly, for the upcoming meeting, to consider doing a rating system for text, different textbooks at our next curriculum committee meeting, and I personally have reservations about that. I want us to, we had talked about being more focused on falling in line with policy 108, 109, where we're looking at getting options, making sure the options are readily available, being taught well, those teaching options are available to our, to our students, and also that the listings are available to parents, so parental choice is maximized and very well established. I think we talked about that the last two curriculum committee meetings, and I definitely had that as an idea for the upcoming meeting, to start taking action and discussing that, but I did want to just present, because this is a, this is a committee of the whole meeting, if there are any concerns by any of the curriculum committee members that you wanted to discuss that for the upcoming meeting or have that as an option. I personally have some reservations about it just because of the task it would be, and...
Can you explain rating system? What do you mean rating?
Well, that's what I don't know. It was, well, it was...
Like a rubric for the content that we...
Yeah, and it was presented to us to make a content rating system for our, for our literature material.
A content rating system?
Parental advisory system, basically.
Ah, okay.
And I have, I want to maximize choice is my thing, and I want, our committee is working on that now. We want to make sure the awareness is there, the choices are there, and that's out there. But I have my own, my personal reservations, but I certainly, because of just who is in charge of that, what standards are there, and, you know, as we go through approval processes, it's, you know, the, the people in the committees have the leeway to look into things, but if we box ourselves into different standards for approvals, and, you know, what, what criteria are different people using, and I want the parents to be engaged and just being able to look at the things and use that choice. I want to maximize choice, and I think that was the standard that we talked about in the last curriculum committee meeting.
Yeah, and we talked about the transparency, as been mentioned before, as far as making sure that that information is out there.
Right.
Readily available to be able to view.
Right.
And work on that process as well.
And I would have concerns about who, who sets the standard, who reviews it, who has, who has the leeway to change the guidelines later, years, years later, you know, it's the consistency of it, what that would be, so...
And there is a 30-day review process for the public to come.
Right, so...
Look at the books, the books are at the administration building for you to come and look at prior to us moving them to the full board to approve. The important part is, you need to watch and listen to the meeting announcements and know when the curriculum committee meetings are, and then you can come, the committee meetings, we have, we can have a little bit more discussion in those meetings. It's not a free-for-all, but it, we can have a little bit more discussion.
But if there is desire for that, you guys can certainly let me know, and we could have that discussion in a curriculum committee.
Is there precedent for a rating system of a, what did you say, parental, parental advisory? Is there precedent for that?
Tippa Gore had them on the CDs in the, what was it, the early 1990s? She recommended a rating system on music.
But I mean, on school content?
As far as school stuff, I've never heard of any.
I'd be interested to find, I'll...
I mean, it'd be very similar, and I think the way it was presented was very similar to like the movies. You have, you have a guideline as far as what's appropriate from a movie standpoint.
Right.
Based on age.
If you guys want to discuss it in a curriculum meeting, I just brought it up so that, you know, if there's interest in it, those are my reservations because of that, because even movie standards, there's controversy over certain movies that have PG ratings right now, and who judges it by what, by content? And, you know, to take that on as, as the district versus maximizing the ideas of choice and visibility, I think is our, what we addressed first is our primary, primary objectives. So just wanted to let, let the committee know about it before we end at our committee meeting here. If you have any interest, let me know.
One consideration is, is 30 days enough time to review?
Policy 108 and 109 states that we need to have a list of the texts and content available.
Well, we can work on that.
It's not.
Yeah.
I'm saying we...
So that's what we need to discuss in the committee meeting?
Yeah.
I would be...
That's one of the things we definitely want to work on.
I would like to discuss that in the committee meeting.
Correct.
Okay, any other comments? Need a motion to adjourn to committee the whole meeting?
Motion to adjourn.
Moved by Ed, seconded by...
Second.
By Mark. Anybody need a five-minute break before we go into committee, the whole voting meeting? Okay, we're going to move into Monday, the May 2, 2022 FR Board of School Directors' Regular We're not in executive session apparently between meetings, so reading of the mission statement, "We, the Franklin Regional School Community, strive for excellence, learning, achievement, and citizenship in all we do." Roll call, Ms. Wolf.
Here.
Mr. Kuzlosky?
Here.
Mr. Mitterator?
Here.
Mr. Weinman?
Here.
Mr. Krumsky?
Here.
Mr. Azalina?
Here.
Ms. Alteri Hand?
Here.
Mr. Yant is absent. Mr. Yingling?
Here. Okay, we're going to stand for Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Okay, we're going to accept nominations for treasurer.
Mr. President, I nominate Scott Weinman.
Okay. Made seconded. Any other nominations for treasurer? And for the third time, any nominations for treasurer? No other nominations are heard, Scott Weinman. We'll take a roll call vote on Scott Weinman for treasurer. Oh, we just take a yes or no vote. All in favor for Scott?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries eight zero. Congratulations, Scott. That's a tough job. All right, we need a motion to approve the regular meeting for, meeting minutes for April 11, 2022. Need a motion?
So moved.
Moved. Ed, seconded.
Second.
Diana. Any comments? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries eight zero. Ms. Pines, Dr. Pines, roll caller of upcoming topics?
Yes, upcoming topics are personnel, annual ESY contracts, contracts and appointments, gifts, grants, and donations. Let me get that for you.
I got it.
Budget transfers, '22, '23 general budget.
Okay, future dates?
Future dates, upcoming board and committee meetings, May 18, this curriculum committee meeting begins at 5:00 PM at the administration offices, which is the Newlandsburg Elementary School. May 26, finance committee meeting beginning at 1:30 in the administrative, ah, administrative offices. June 6, committee of the whole meeting beginning at 7:30 here at the municipal building, and June 20 is the regular meeting beginning at 7:30 at the municipal building here, and that's it.
Thank you. Okay, public comments. We have two public comments.
My name is Matthew Ackman. I live at 4211 Bulltown Road. What I wanted to address here was just the discussion of, it seems to be an increased, I'm trying to parse my words here, just trying to be as most appropriate as possible, but let me start with my kindergarten through sixth grade teachers. Still know all their last names, don't know any of their first names, and I know where two of them live because my parents pointed out when we drove by. And just some of the things I heard in this meeting alone, it's, I'm appalled, it's unbelievable, the discussions that are occurring in our school district. And it's not Franklin Regional specific, this is going on, again, like I said, all across the country, and it needs to stop, and something that we can affect is we can affect what happens in our school. I don't think that this, we should be discussing preferred pronouns, I don't think that teachers should be talking about anything beyond what the curriculum says, and just a couple of things to point out here to back up my case with that, outside of centuries, millennia of societies, talking about man and woman, male and female, and that's that. The DSM-IV, the Diagnostic and Statistical Manual of Mental Disorders, discussed gender dysphoria, following what we would talk about transgenderism, and it is a mental disorder. Accompanied with that, with transgenderism, and, and the reason why I'm bringing up specifically transgenderism, is because if we're going to sexualize discussions with children, it could lead to that. There's different statistics going around, but we're looking at approximately 40% suicide rate for people who are involved with transgenderism. That's not good, and that is both for people who are accepted, not accepted, bullied, not bullied, pre-operation, post-operation. So knowing that discussions like this can lead to transgenderism, can lead to very serious conditions, and even though it's not suicide, if we're looking at mental health disorders, anxiety, et cetera, for the rest of their lives, I don't think that we want to be a part of that as a school board. Maybe an unfair, but I think it has some merit comparisons, instead of, you know, discussing sexuality with children like this, what if it was smoking? Would anybody on this board be okay with teachers talking about smoking with their students? And maybe not cigarettes, maybe cigars, pipes, whatever. It's not appropriate discussion, because smoking is unhealthy, and we know that it's unhealthy. In whatever we need to do as a school board, as a, as a school district, you know, we can't be allowing this to happen. That's just my input as a parent, and thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Matthew. Okay, Charles Chatwick.
We work too hard to raise and shape our children to have them go to school and have it undone by teachers with political or personal agendas. Is it true that the district has instructed faculty to no longer answer emails received from parents? If this is true, is it ethical? Is it acceptable to you? For what matter, is it even legal, considering we're talking about public employees paid by tax dollars? What about parents like myself who remain in line of communication with the district is through emails? We must just, will we simply just get no response? Granted, that is much different than what I've been getting from, what I have been getting in response to my emails already. And in reference to the pronoun summary, which the students were filled out, what's the purpose of that exercise, except to normalize transgenderism, something that the World Health Organization categorized as a mental disorder until way back in May of 2019? If you can even remember that long ago, I know it seems like forever. They changed that definition not because of the science that they claimed to follow so closely, changed, they changed it because of the political and social pressure. Is it true that there was a sign-up sheet for the walkout at the middle school? If so, who had control of it, and where did it originate? How did the school secretary know about the sign-up sheet? What was the purpose of the walkout? I've been asked in that sense the 11th. Was it organized by a staff member? If so, what discipline will he or she face? If none, why not? If students organized it, will the students then be disciplined for walking out of class and the building? If not, why not? Why was this walkout supported by the district or middle school? I ask this because the principal told me herself that she had a meeting with the students to discuss procedure. What is procedure for something like this, considering it goes against school policy? If this was not permitted by the school, what steps were taken to discourage participation? Or shall I rephrase that to ask, what steps were taken to encourage participation in this meeting with the principal? Were the students reminded of the consequences they would face per the district's own policies? There are only three options. Either the students, the employees, or both should face discipline. If none of those things happen, I will have no remaining options other than to escalate this to a higher level, or possibly some of my friends in the press will be interested to hear the story and see the chain, email chain. Either way, this is not going to be something I forget and let go. If the district believes this is something they can hand, they can continue to push off until summer break, and it will go away, the district is wrong. I have five children in this district. I will not be letting this go. I will be at every meeting I can, and so this has been appropriately resolved. I will speak on it at every meeting. I will continue to push until someone takes responsibility. Long story short, I am not going away, and neither is the situation. It would be best to deal with it now rather than continue to kick the can down the road further and lose the opportunity to handle it quietly within the district. The chances of that have just about evaporated. Thank you.
Okay, that's it for public comments. Slusser's comments.
I think we have a motion.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to move to consent agenda items. Items to be removed from the consent agenda item for separate action by board members. We have 33 consent agenda items. Anybody have any questions on any of them? I have one. Do we need a roll call vote on the Northern Career Technology one? Okay. I need a motion to approve 1 through 33.
So moved.
Moved, Mark, second.
Second, Scott.
Second, Scott. Comments? Hearing none, all in favor for 1 through 33? Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries eight, zero. Okay. I need a motion for proposal of the final general fund budget for 2022, 2023.
So moved.
Moved, Scott.
Second.
Second, Kevin. I need a roll call vote. That's all right.
Ms. Eshelman, Ramey?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzlosky?
Yes.
Mr. Mitterator?
Yes.
Mr. Weinman?
Yes.
Mr. Karmski?
Yes.
Mr. Azalina?
Yes.
Ms. Altteri Hand?
Yes.
Mr. Yant is absent. Mr. Yingling?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, that's it. I need a motion to adjourn to committee of the voting meeting.
So moved.
Moved, Scott.
Second.
Second, Mark. All in favor? Aye. Opposed, motion carries eight, zero. Thanks, everybody, for coming. Meeting is over.